We are live. Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, January 21st. Welcome to the City Council meeting. And like all of our other meetings, we are streaming live on City Madison YouTube channel as well as archiving for future reference. Like with all of our other meetings, I'd invite you to stand and recite the Lord's Prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll get into tonight's business. Thank you.
You are in heaven. How would be thy name? Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for that is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Patrick Tevinow.
Here.
Carla Kredz.
Here.
Lucy DeTillo.
Here.
Josh Schaefer.
Here.
Joel Storm.
In Root.
In Root.
Jim Bartlet is out, and Josh Wilber.
Here.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Having had an opportunity to review the minutes from Tuesday, January the 7th, so we'll entertain a motion to approve.
We just have one minor correction. On the bills on second reading, ordinance 2024-17, where it says, all in favor, motion carried 6-0, we were all here, so technically that should be a 7-0 vote.
Oh, 7-0.
It's minor, but anyway, want to get it right. So I would, how do I make it? I am moved to approve with correction, fixing the 7-0, yep, the minutes from last month.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Reposed?
Josh.
Carly, you had an announcement?
Yes.
President Pro Tem?
Yes, so this was posted on the front door, and then I posted also over by where you picked up your agenda. But at our October 7th meeting last year, we adopted an amended ordinance, 2024-6, called the Common Council Rules. And under section 30.08, titled Privileges of Citizens, it reads, "The presiding officer shall have the option to require speakers to sign in in advance if they intend to speak during the public comment section of the meeting, and/or impose a four-minute time limit for any speaker." So as of January 2025, we as a council would like to use these guidelines only for the public comment section of our meeting. So citizens will be required to sign up. My clipboard was back there today, and I have it, because at the beginning of the meeting, we bring the clipboard forward. And we would also, we're going to limit each person to four minutes. This does not apply for people who are going to comment on an ordinance or something else. It's only the public comment section at the end of the meeting. So if you, if we're talking about an ordinance, and you want to say something, you don't have to sign up, you're welcome to come to the podium. But at the end, when we say we'll open it up for public comment, I will call the people up who have pre-signed, and unfortunately, I will also be the timer to keep you to four minutes. So thank you very much for your patience and cooperation with this, and we'll begin that, and we'll carry that out through the whole year. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. And moving on, we'll go straight to our first bill of the evening. Joe?
This is ordinance number 2025-1, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, amending the zoning map of the City of Madison, Indiana. And this is dealing with 1023 East Vaughn Drive. It is to change it from open space to historic district residential.
Just to give some context on this for the council, this is a property down on Vaughn Drive that is currently zoned, open space, and lots of the zoning around, or actually beside that, are open space as well. So the planning commission didn't fill like a spot, a spot zoning for that, and changing something from open space to historic district residential was the right thing to do. So that's why an unfavorable recommendation was given. And then we also helped to guide the applicant to the BZA, so they can get a variance on the open space, so they could do their improvements to that structure that is on it, for whatever reason that structure got put on, an open space zoned area. But to be able to do that, they'll need to get a variance from the BZA at this point.
And just to add on to those comments, the structure was built, best we were able to tell, around 1993, and the open space zoning would have already been in, in place at that time, so the structure really shouldn't have been built to begin with. And so we also felt that it would be opening a very large can of worms if we started changing zoning for every non-conforming structure in town, when work needed to be done on it, and that a variance would be the better, better route to pursue on this.
Thank you, Patrick.
Sir, do you have any other public comments? Any comments from the audience on this?
This is the first reading. It will go to second reading at the next meeting. Moving on, we have a bit of a short agenda tonight, so those of you that were here for the zoning amendment, that part of our agenda is over. So just didn't know if that's what you were here for. I see some very familiar faces here. Our next meeting, just to let you know, is Tuesday, February the 4th, and that'll be this, we have a two-reading process, and there'll be additional public comment allowed on this bill at that meeting before council takes its vote on the proposed ordinance. So the next meeting to come back to would be February the 4th. Thank you. All right, so reports of city officials. Our clerk treasurer has a budget report and other matters.
So I'm just going to go off on my sheet. The mayor has put in the packet the DLGF County Audit Auditor's paperwork. We have, our 2025 budget has been certified by DLGF, so fully accepted. Congratulations. So you'll see my notes as well, because I was confused that the mayor wanted me to make a presentation to y'all. So I do have some additional things that I can talk about. Did you want to say anything else about 1782, about the?
Just that the order is final. Thank you to Deputy Mayor McGee and Clerk Treasurer Rennerston for all the work they did responding to questions from the 1782 by DLGF. But what was, what is in your packet is the actual budget order, which is what every unit of government receives for its adopted and approved budgets. This is for 2025. So you'll see the all, all 10 townships plus the incorporated municipalities budgets in this budget order. So this is, this is what we use for our final. And I'll just mention there, too, is that some of the information that we utilize in estimating our, our budgets for the year continues to be certified by DLGF. And really what I mean by that is, we use a lot of estimates when we are formulating and adopting our budget, but the, the actual certification of some of the estimates that DLGF provides to us happens after adoption. So we'll keep you apprised if anything transpires. I'll give you one example, and that is circuit breaker. City Madison has approximately a 20% circuit breaker, and what that means is approximately 20% of our tax levy is reduced because of credits provided to homeowners relative to the difference between their taxes based on the tax rate and the constitutional tax caps. Those estimates didn't get certified until April of 2024. So there's still, you know, us to be cautious as we proceed into 2025 in looking at not only the estimates for the circuit breaker, but also the estimates for the public safety lit tax. That has not been certified yet either. But, but our order is final, and we can proceed with the adopted budget based upon the, the DLGF order. Turn it back to you, clerk.
Oh, thank you. So I've given you guys just a quick rundown of things that are happening within the clerk's office. Of course, thank you for the mayor, the mayor's assistant, and my staff. We really worked hard in, in making some adjustments to the DLGF, the 1782. So it was a, there was a learning curve for me, so I appreciate both of your helps. So the W2s are completed. The employees should have received those W2s either over the weekend or sometime this week. If you haven't gotten them by the end of the week, let me know. Vendor 1099, we're working on those right now. They will be completed and postmarked by the January 31st. So those are all things we're working on at this moment. There's some reporting deadlines that I have to meet by the end of February, our annual financial report, our debt management reports, and our government contract reports are all due to DLGF by the end of February, so we're also working on those as well. Bank rec, we're, we're getting there. As you recall, there are about two and a half years' worth of things that were, adjustments were outstanding for, so we're about near the end of that. It has held up some of our reporting to you guys, so you have not gotten appropriation reports or fund reports for this month yet, and that is because they are still pulling in 24 numbers. So what we've done for the departments is what you see attached to this little letter. It's just a report showing what the 25 budget was approved at, and gives their appropriation numbers, so they can continue to do APVs and pay bills. It's just the reporting's a little wonky right now until we close out 24. We do have anticipation of closing October, in the next day or two, so hopefully by the end of the week, we'll get at least October done and November, hopefully. It's going to be, it's going to be really pushing it to get November done as well, but we're working on getting November done at very bare minimum early next week, so that we can work on getting December closed quickly, run 25 reports, and open it back up to clean everything up. And that's something we will have to have absolutely completed in February, when we get our AFRs and things done.
Shirley, is, is it your plan to get this to where you eventually are closing the prior month out in the, in the next month?
Absolutely.
Kind of very similar to what you see in business and stuff like that?
Yes, yes. The goal is, we usually get our bank statements the first week of the following month.
Yeah.
So when that happens, everything should be keyed up and ready to go. So when that happens, we've got six weeks to get the paperwork up to DL, up to Gateway.
Sure.
So you can go into Gateway, and you can see all of our bank reconciliation, our fund report, and our actual bank statement, and they all match, and we, we have to highlight for them, and that's a precursor to our audits. If we do that religiously, and everything matches, our audits should be much, much shorter.
Right.
That in combination with our debt reports and our, and our financial reports, we shouldn't really have as long of an audit.
Right. It just makes it easy.
It's every year.
You're doing a great job. I just, I just figured that's kind of where you're headed.
Yeah, so we're trying.
Awesome.
We're trying really hard.
Thank you, sir.
So yeah, you're welcome. You're welcome. Do you guys have any other questions? Thank you for your patience. We really appreciate it. Yeah.
Yes, thank you. We're off, we're off to a good start. Anything else, clerk? Okay. Moving on, Dewey, we will, Dewey and Brian are here for one of our first, first department year-end reports that we'll present to council. We gave this presentation to the Board of Public Works and Safety earlier. I wish you all were at that meeting. It lasted about three hours. Large part of it was our 2025 insurance renewal, all the technicalities associated with that marketplace, which is ever-changing. But we did give her a good report on, on the Planning, Preservation, and Design Department. So Dewey?
It's a little bit warmer in here than it was at 2:00 this afternoon.
There was no heat in here earlier today.
We have a few more folks here tonight, though. That's good. So please excuse my voice. Good evening, council members, mayor. Yeah, we would like to give you, Brian's here with me, the building inspector, just a overview of what, what our office did last year, and, and talk about some things going forward. So it's very extensive. I will be as thorough as possible, probably go through quickly, and then I'll take your questions and stuff afterwards. If, if you need to stop me, though, please do. Okay, through our office, we do a lot of permitting, and probably the thing that stands out most is the building permits that were issued last year through our office. 182 issued. You can see the commercial residential breakdown to the tune of better than $26 million. We do other permits, too, obviously demolitions, conditional use permits, excavations, which Brian can talk to a little bit, dumpster permits, curb cuts. So a lot of, lot of activity happening, 468 permits last year.
Dewey, I'm probably going to interject a little bit like we did at PPW, but, you know, look at the number on excavations, 110. If you remember, probably a year and a half or so ago, we adopted a really important ordinance that established design standards for excavation, because the problem we were having was really uncontrolled, unregulated excavation of our streets and sidewalks and rideways. And this just goes, this just shows you how important that matter is, because we're talking about the most sizable investment we have across the community is really in our roads and sidewalks and streets. And twice, twice a week on average, someone's coming in and, you know, cutting it, cutting it up. And, and what our experience has been in the past has been very poor job of restoring, restoring that surface, which creates a lot of travel issues and a lot of damage to our road. So we're still getting it under control, but it's never been better. Brian's done a really good job of managing that process to the point where we have very few outstanding excavations at a time. And, you know, now you'll see a few, because we're having some busted water pipes and those kinds of things that can't be restored until, until it warms up. But just look at the volume of permitting activity that's coming through a very small department.
Okay. These are just some examples. I do not have before and after pictures, but these are some of the examples of demolitions that happened during the 2024 year. This being on Lafayette Street. Now it's down to the foundation, still a little, little bit of cleanup that needs to be done there, but, Mindy? This would be the 700 block of Walnut Street. This would be in the Jerry Lane Alley, actually, looking to the backside of the house.
That, that site was the, where the murder occurred.
Yes.
Four years or so ago.
Yep. This, unless you drive down to the city garage, you probably wouldn't notice. You can see it from 421 if you looked, but this was a fire that happened. I'd have to ask you folks when the fire actually happened. I don't think I was here at that time.
Three years ago, maybe? Three and a half?
Is it?
Yeah.
Several years ago, yeah. Patrick's got a place. So that is now cleaned up to our satisfaction. There's a little mound of dirt that needs to be spread out, but, so those are some examples of the, of the demolitions that happened this year.
Voluntary demolitions.
Voluntary, yeah. Nuisance cases by violation. I, my first day on the job here was January 3rd of 2022. I've just kept this slide going from that point to see, from my standpoint, but just to show others what, kind of the ebb and flow of what I see in nuisance cases. I was quite zealous. Can you be overzealous or zealous the first year? I don't know, I was looking for everything, but not much change from last year to this year. What you will notice, and I'll try and explain as we go on, a difference between unclean, unclean premises and trash. You see a big, maybe a flip-flop there, and I'll, I'll try and talk through that as we go through the slides. Okay, Mindy? Sorry again about my voice. Nuisance examples. So this is one of more than a dozen pictures, probably 24 pictures that I took. I consider this, per the ordinance, an unclean disorderly premises versus the next slide. Well, that's abandoned vehicles, clearly, which we see. Sorry, one more, Mindy.
Lots of abandoned vehicles, apparently. I mean, if you look at that slide, 100, over 150 abandoned vehicles in Madison in the last three years?
It's abandoned, and, and the ordinance talks about not just abandoned, but disused. And that, so it may not be abandoned, but if it's, if it's just sitting, like if we go back to the other slide, the car in the grass there, I believe the owner lives in the, in the house. This is on West Main Street, you know, maybe on Marine or somewhere down that way, but I can't quite see the lettering. But it's just disused. It sits there, and then the oil drips into the grass, and, you know.
Inoperable?
No, actually, that one's not inoperable. The white one actually did move after I tagged it, so that's operable, doesn't look that way. The van, though, is definitely, was in trouble, so. Furniture is always an issue. I continue to have, you know, cases every week where furniture is just mattresses, furniture just placed out on the curb. This is actually behind the movie theaters up there, so, which is a common dumping ground. You can't see it. We got Mr. Shaw there to show how poor of a job I did on the grass and weeds of that particular property that's at the bottom of Dugan Hollow. And then trash is more what I'm talking about there on the, on the upper right-hand side. Literally just trash issues, not necessarily, I mean, you could say that's unclean and disorderly as well, but I'm trying to, trying to make those distinctions. Okay. Unsafe structures. Going back, so when I first started, there was, there were identified properties that we considered unsafe, but since January of 2022, we've identified 181 different cases of what we consider unsafe. 104 of those now have been abated. 77 we still consider current or active cases. Of those, of those, 54 of them, though, we're considering just vacant or abandoned properties. And the Unsafe Building Law talks about, there's, what is there, 15 or 20 different, any, any one of them criteria that the building inspector can deem something unsafe. And one of those, in fact, the final one of that list, is something that's been vacant for six months or longer. Doesn't have to be abandoned, but if it has been vacant, so we're classifying 54 of the 77 that are still out there to be either a vacant or abandoned property. Abandoned meaning we've had no contact with the owner, we're not sure what's going on with it. So, okay, Mindy. These are just some examples of what we consider unsafe properties. This would be across from Dr. Butler's office there and the First Financial Bank. The front not looking so bad, but you wouldn't, wouldn't believe the backside if you, if you walked back behind there. This is another property, this is actually an inhabited property. I think we've spoken of this property before, on West Third Street, just, just one, one structure away from Craigmont. 307 Hendrix is actually up on the hill. We've done some work with this. We've abated the, we've sealed it up, had a contractor do that. We were in good conversation with the owners on this one, but it's an ebb and flow with them. Sometimes they're reaching out, when we reach out, sometimes not. I will say that at the Board of Public Works today, I spoke with the board about the 23 that remain to be, that remain unsafe. We are committing to getting a written plan from owners to tell us how we're going to make these things safe, or how we're going to abate the unsafe portion of it.
Dewey?
Yeah, please.
Of the 23 unsafe ones, how many of those are occupied?
Any? Two, at least. Less than five.
Two.
This is on North Walnut Street. Just something we need to take care of and get with the owner on that. Mindy? This is one of the inhabited unsafe structures as you're heading out of town on Park Avenue or what, what do your locals call it?
56.
56. So, sorry, I'm a local now, but not, not a native. More pictures of that same property. Just a tarp as the, as the, as the roof. We're fearful of fire there. You can see the, is it wood burning inside? Yeah, so we're fearful of fire there. Okay, Mindy? To combat some of these unsafe structures and different things, the PACE grant has come along, and the mayor can, can help out here. You can see the money spent, or invested by the city versus ownership, and the ratio we talked about a little bit today, the ratio of public versus private investment there. Dilapidated structures, you can see the breakdown of numbers. I'm not sure, Bob, you have something else you want to?
Just the effectiveness of our Clean, Safe, and Beautiful strategy. PACE has been great in working with property owners to make investment. You can see here for 2024, there was about $4.5 million of investment, which is about seven, almost eight to one leverage ratio of our dollars. The only number that tops that in just about anything we do with regard to return on investment is our redevelopment commission investments for 2024 was almost a 10 to one ratio of public to private investment. So it's working as intended. We still have work to do, neighborhood by neighborhood, home by home, and continuing to abate dilapidated and dangerous structures by more private investment with public PACE partnership dollars.
Bob, is the dilapidated structure total, is that a combination of city and private dollars, or is that just city dollars that was spent on it?
That's city dollars down there.
So the majority of city dollars actually that went towards dilapidated?
Yes, in our PACE guidelines, 75% of the dollars need to go toward our targeted areas, and our target, we have two targeted areas in the city, and it has, it has worked very well in the target area. So we have been, that's the other thing we've done with this PACE program, is move the dollars and the investment to where we believe it's most needed to eliminate blight and unsafe structures in those neighborhoods.
This is the poorest slide I've ever put together, so I apologize.
It's very colorful.
Yeah, it's very colorful. Simply representing that the, the largest portion of the pie is, is private investment, the rest being city and county dollars, so. All right, let's look at some before and after. This would be on Mulberry Street.
North Mulberry.
North Mulberry. I don't even remember the pictures. Maybe I wasn't in town from the left, but clearly we've, we've come a long way on those two. All right, Mindy? This would be the 300 block of Walnut, 308, maybe, three, somewhere in there, just?
Two structures there burned out?
Yep.
Already done?
So this is the, the front facade of the 705 Walnut, not just next to the Northside Liquor Store there on Walnut. Really proud of the way that looks. Mindy?
And that one, you might want to mention, the rear of that was featured previously.
Yeah, sorry, yeah. So the, the demolition that I had said is on the Jerry Lane side, that, that was, that's that property there.
The unsafe portion of that building was demolished, and that was abated by the property owner.
Yep, yes, it was. And I believe this is the 500 block of, or maybe the, also the 600 block of Walnut at Fifth Street, corner of Fifth and?
Fourth.
Fourth and Walnut, my mistake. Okay, Mindy. Zoning is also part of the planning, preservation, and design, and the issues I'm seeing with zoning in the department really revolve around three, three issues. That being storage containers, not just tiny sheds, but storage containers on private property not allowed. We had some issues there. Off-site signage, so a business having signage somewhere other than on their property, also a violation in the zoning ordinance. And then an increasing existence of folks living in campers or RVs on private property. on private property, which I think you've dealt with some of those.
And not in a campground.
Those issues, not in a campground.
Not in a campground.
No, not in a campground. We even have a tent down on North. I hope they're not in the tent right now, but on North Walnut. So, all right. And there's other boards in addition to the PACE board through our office, the Plan Commission, the BZA, and the Historic District Board of Review. Brenna had to teach that to me a bunch of times. All right, Mindy. Just some numbers there. The Plan Commission deals with amending plaids and rezoning. You talked about that a little bit tonight, parking issue setbacks. You can see the number of applications there. BZA deals with conditional use and variance, variance issues. I chose, we talked about this in the meeting earlier today, there were a hundred and seven applications of just conditional use, not also variances, so that would be a higher number. And then certificate of appropriateness, you can see the breakdown of applications taken, board approval versus staff approval. Something we haven't talked about a lot, although we have had quite a bit of success in the stormwater issue. I am your MS4 Coordinator for the city as well as code enforcement. And stormwater is kind of, I said this today, it's kind of a misleading thing. You think of, think of the stormwater MS4 ordinance as the quality of water, not necessarily the quantity of water. And one thing that we deal with in, in the ordinance is what we call illicit discharges. We'll have some examples of what those are here in a second, but what we're trying to do is minimize the amount of discharges into our water system so that the treatment plan and everything's not having to work twice as hard. Does that make sense? I investigated or had two hundred and nineteen cases in addition to the nuisance cases last year, two hundred and nineteen cases primarily dealing on private property. We did pass the stormwater ordinance late last fall and, and adopt it, of course. Yours truly did take some training to work with the construction and post-construction inspection procedures such as will be going on at Sunrise, Sunrise and other places. So, and then we did, there was a IDAM audit that we did go through. We had some minor findings that I implemented procedures they recommended or abated the issues that they exposed. And then we did have a major finding regarding our salt barn down at the, down at the garage. So these are some examples of what I mean by, well, there's an infrastructure issue here, but two illicit discharges. The one on the, the left is actually cooking oil from a restaurant that was dumped on the ground. Grease, that kind of thing. And we have, you know, I used to serve part-time at different restaurants in town, and I see sometimes how the, the grease and things are disposed of, and that, that's what we consider an illicit discharge. We also had a contractor dump paint. The bottom right dumped paint down the, down the drainage system. The, the top right picture is actually, it's on Green Road near the park there. That hole's probably five foot deep, would you say? Better, yeah, it's, it's quite, we're, we're still working on that. But these are things that I deal with, both infrastructure and primarily, though, illicit discharges. And then the construction, post-construction inspections. Okay, Mindy. Some more examples here. We have many festivals in town that we smoke meats, cook meats, different things. This is on West, or I'm sorry, East Main Street to the left there. Bless you. Across from the courthouse, yep. So it's soot and, and grease and things that eventually with rainfall will make its way into the system. The, the one on the right is actually a demo project up on, what's the hill? Telegraph Hill, thank you. And. Yeah, you locals know that. I'm not gonna live that down my life. But this is what, so on a construction site, this is considered not good. We've got to rinse, rinse tires and things before they get onto the roadways, the impervious surfaces. That's out of my jurisdiction, but I wanted to show it as an example of what I deal with with stormwater. Okay. An ongoing situation with Moody Park, as we know, I left this in there. I think we've spoken about this before. The recent development, one more slide, Mindy, is September of last year, the order was denied, and we're seeking.
So on this, you know, the, what we are really trying to demonstrate here i- is the work and sometimes how long the work takes. We have never ordered a demolition. So when he was talking earlier about the demolitions, those were voluntary abatements to abate an unsafe structure. And demolition is the last thing you want to do. It's, it's, you try everything ahead of that, but unfortunately, many of these properties have gone unmaintained for twenty, thirty years, and they're just in a state of condition where they can't be brought back. The only exception's been with Moody Park, and that particular property has been flooded multiple times. And after the flood of 2021, it was determined by our building inspector and the Board of Public Works and Safety that there were approximately seven mobile homes there that were unsafe and needed to be removed. We've been in, of course, the owner has sued the city, and we started this case in 2022, I think around February of twenty-three, maybe it's February twenty-three. February of twenty-three is when this started. And the latest action, and Joe actually just left, but they did file a motion for summary judgment, which was denied by the, the court, and they are now appealing the court's decision at the state level. So we're in the process of doing more discovery and preparing and waiting for the appellate court at the state level to make a decision relative to their request. But you can see as an example how long some of these things take. And there was, there's another property that he'll be showing as a success story here soon, that I know he, he's been working on for two years of getting the owner to abate the unsafe structure. So many of this, there's no quick resolution on a majority of some, some of these cases that, that Dewey and Brian work on.
Yes. We've seen these pictures before. I believe these are just internal pictures of some of the mobile homes at Moody Park. Some external pics. All right, let's end on a high note here. Successes this year, 2050 Wood Street. Carla and I have talked about this. She just thought it was an amazing transformation. That is at the corner, well, as you come over the railroad tracks on Banta, not sure if you folks know where the area there, you locals would know that. Next picture is the after. Yeah, we had that, I don't know, identified probably from the first couple of months I was here as something that was in trouble and.
And owner abated?
Owner abated.
Owner abated, so we're grateful for the owners.
Yeah, absolutely. Owner abated, okay. Also, another owner abatement, this is down by, across from the campground in that area, Ferry Street before. I just really love the way that has turned around the way it looks now. Another inspiring thing Carla, Carla likes, this was on, it's actually Dell Road, Michigan and Dell Road. This had, yeah, just abandoned, hadn't moved in years. And, of course, we did the violation, and that's how it looks now. So. And then the final success story, I mean, you can't say fires are success, but this is right here on Elm Street. That was taken down, owner abated, demoed by the owner, taken down to the foundation, and then.
PACE program?
PACE program, too. And then this is, I just took this this morning, actually.
New structure coming out of the, out of the ground there, and it looks great, fits right into that block, and a great outcome. We've had too many instances where buildings destroyed by fire sat for a really long time without a plan. And that's the most important thing that I think Dewey and Brian and others are working on is a plan with the property owner that gets you out, the outcome you need.
Questions? Thoughts? Let us keep our jobs.
Oh, I don't think you're gonna run out of work anytime soon.
No. Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Keep up good work, guys. Brian, anything to add? Okay. At the next meeting, we will continue with some annual reports from public safety, streets, solid waste. All this is about, you know, keeping Madison clean, safe and beautiful. Moving on, no bills on second reading or miscellaneous, so, Madam President, I'll turn it back over to you.
So we just have one person on public comments. I welcome to the podium Ms. Sandy Palmer.
I have nothing to say. I just will sign that every time because sometimes you say something here that I might want to comment on.
Okay. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you.
So then.
Thank you. Well, moving on then, thank you, for everybody's participation in this new process. We'll continue to see how it goes. Mayor's comments, I want to mention that because of the cold weather, the groundbreaking, right now, it's, we're waiting on a ground thawing for the residents at Sunrise Crossing. That is tentatively been rescheduled for March the nineteenth. Hopefully, we'll have some sunshine and warm weather to melt all of the piled-up snow and, and thaw out some of our ground. The contractors will be mobilizing to the site probably within a week, but our groundbreaking won't, you know, the ceremonial groundbreaking won't occur until, till March, but the contractor will be mobilizing and getting to work. So you'll start seeing some changes up there very quickly. Legislation I mentioned at the last meeting, I'll continue to bring it up, and, and maybe at the next meeting, I'll have some specific bills to mention to you. But this is going to be a very challenging legislative session for all local governments, Madison, Jefferson County, everybody across the state because of the proposed property tax reform, as well as quite a few other bills that are being proposed. There are seventeen hundred bills proposed in this legislative session. It's an enormous amount of volume, and as we get into it a month or so, some of them will start, you'll be able to identify which ones are not going to be moving through committee and then, you know, go to the full House or the full Senate or land on the governor's desk. But we will be closely monitoring that. And then our legislative, our dinner with our legislative team, which is our state representative, our state senator, I think is for February fifth? Does that sound right? Some of you may have signed up for that. Hopefully, hopefully you can make it. It's an important dinner. And then we did spend a lot of time this morning on insurance at Board of Public Works and Safety. We have worked really hard for managing the risk across all forms of, you know, liability and property casualty and cybersecurity and putting, putting the things in place that help our insurance renewals in a very, very difficult market. We're still working on that, but we have to finalize that by Friday, and we're looking at a double-digit increase in our premium. We're not looking at a non-renewal like some local governments are getting, but we are looking at, because of the amount of casualties and what they call social inflation, which is a new term. If you've not heard of social inflation, that is from just the tremendous amounts of litigation with public entities. As you know, we have a police department, which has got a lot, lot of liability attached to it, as well as all of our fleets of vehicles and streets and sidewalks, and all of that exposes us for liability purposes. So we are working to get our insurance renewal rate down as low as possible, but it looks like a significant increase for 2025. And lastly, I'll mention that we are experiencing some very severe cold weather. We went from, you know, we went from a snow emergency, which our city crews did a great job of abating. We still have a lot of snow piled up around the community, so please be patient with that. We'll, you know, we're asking Mother Nature to do it the majority of the workforce, but we'll continue to remove it as we can. We'll get the Christmas direct, Christmas decorations down as quickly as we can, but we are experiencing frigid temperatures, and we just need to be careful with our, our crews. And then I want to give a thank you to the Salvation Army and Dave Adams for continuing to, and the volunteers. It's the volunteers who are really, really critical in operating the warming shelter on these really cold nights. So without, without them, we'd have some very vulnerable people out in the elements. Our next meeting is February the fourth. Jamp, welcome back. I'm glad to see you. I know you've had a difficult couple of weeks, but welcome back to our council meetings. I'll turn it over to council if you've got anything to add. Otherwise, we'll have a motion to adjourn. Next meeting's February fourth.
I move to adjourn.
A second.
Well, bear, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?